Good evening, everyone. I called at order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on November seventeenth, twenty twenty five at seven oh one P M. To connect with the council meeting online, please use one of the following links at either Lakewood speaks dot org or Lakewood dot org slash council videos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any links to Lakewood speaks dot org, our online forum for public comments. And we will be leaving that open tonight through ten A M tomorrow morning. Also, a note that we do have information with regards to tonight's presentation on that website as well. Mister Rob, will you please start us off by calling the roll?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselors Cruz, I.
Here.
Cruz Kay.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
Labour.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Mia Carrero.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sharzai. Did I miss?
Looks like she might be frozen.
I do see her in the attendance. And I'll keep going.
She's gone. I bet she's. Oh, there she is.
Oh, here.
Great. And Counselor Sinks.
Here.
Super. Everyone is here. And accountable, Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. And tonight we have a presentation and for the presentation, to get us started, I will hand the floor over to our Deputy City Attorney, Deputy, sorry, excuse me, Deputy City Manager, Ben Goldstein.
Thankfully, I did not.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over in just a minute to Adam Probowlski, the President of Probowlski Research, but I just wanted to say a couple of quick remarks. So every three years, we do a community survey to to give you all and staff a bit of a perspective of what our residents are thinking about the city. It's an extensive survey, so it takes a lot of work to create. Staff spends months figuring out the questions and working with the research firm on how to ask those questions. So hopefully you all find this valuable. There's a ton of information on the website and we were doing some fine tuning. So it wasn't posted on the website until today, but you know, the the full survey, all the results, and then coming for you all soon will be a dashboard that's super cool and interactive. I'm sure Adam will talk about that more, but it will allow you in the community to dive deeper and if you want to see how a particular segment of the population feels about a question with a click of a button, you could do that. So some enhanced functionality in comparison to what we've had in the past as well. So hopefully you all find it valuable and feel free to ask as many questions as you want. This is really your opportunity to, you know, learn more about the survey results. So with that, I will turn it over to Adam Probowlski.
Thank you, Ben. Mayor, Counselors, thank you very much for having me this evening. I'm going to quickly share my screen and bring up our presentation. So as Ben explained, there's a lot of data. We have a an executive version tonight to kind of go through the the high level numbers. As you probably know, there's hundreds of other pages of data looking at this from the perspective of all the different demographics, geography, and there's a lot more that we can we can do with this data other than just the the top line numbers. And and we're on team to make sure you get the most value out of it today and for the next three years until you do the next one. So I will start and and I'll I'll tell you just quickly about us. We're a national firm and we do this exactly for, in addition to helping agencies with understanding the possibility of raising revenues and and with big project developments, things like that. We have hundreds of local agency clients, cities around the country. And in Colorado, it's Avon to Aspen and Boulder to Arvada and and you all. And we also do work for this, the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. So we're we're all over the state. Getting us started here with the data, the methodology, you can have full confidence that this data fully reflects your residents. We matched census proportions, so there's there's really right on within a percentage point or two of the people that live in your city are represented here. No one had an outside voice, outsized voice. No one could game the system. You could only respond once. It really was a deliberate process to make sure that we got all voices represented and in the right proportion. We we talked to people in English and Spanish. They got to choose their language. Three percent chose Spanish. We always like to explain that doesn't mean they don't speak English and it doesn't mean that the English speakers don't speak another language. It's just preference. And it was a pretty robust survey, eighteen minutes, probably, and and took about a a good amount of time. We 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 sent mail and and we did it over the course of about a month. Six hundred and fifty respondents is very robust and and maybe in the perspective of how big the city is, maybe that doesn't sound that way, but just to give you some perspective, the typical number in any political subdivision, city, county, special district around the country is three hundred to four hundred. Statewide in Colorado, you might see seven hundred or nine hundred. So in in Lakewood, six fifty is a very robust, big number of respondents. And and you can see the people responded. We sent mail and and we emailed people and texted people and phone called people on their landlines because some people still use them, most people on their mobiles. And then they could also call into us toll free, twenty four seven, talk to a live interviewer, English or Spanish. So really that that we call it the big warm hug. Everyone had the chance to respond in the way they felt most comfortable. And it was, you know, we did the outreach to make sure it's proportional, so it was very, it wasn't self select in any capacity. Moving to some differences, some new new features of this survey. Really, the the questions were tailored to Lakewood. Oftentimes in national surveys, they're kind of prescribed to kind of do some comparison work and and we still have some good comparison work, but this was really tailored to to the city. This multimode approach I just explained gave this a chance for everyone to respond in their preferred way. And we like to explain that this is a more inclusive, more representative process. So you're gonna see some numbers that'll shift from previous year. Most of them luckily shifted for the better. That doesn't always happen, but definitely a a different version. And we also got rid of in in a perfectly legitimate way of doing research is by weighting data, right? You don't have enough a certain demographic, so you pretend you do, you change the numbers. It's it's acceptable in statistics. We don't do that. We talk one to one. So everybody responded to the survey represented in here. They responded also with open ended responses. We got that rich data of what your residents said, not just a a number on a page. We did some benchmarking to compare you to some of your peers, let's say. And and if you see an agency, a city or a community that you feel like you want to see how you compare to, if they've done a survey, we can give you that benchmarking data and give you that. So this is just, you know, for for tonight, but if you have some others, we're happy to provide that. And you can see how you fare, you know, pretty well against against your peers or compared to your peers. I I think you're unique to yourselves, but you can kind of see where you where you're at in that lineup. And and of course, questions are a little bit nuanced in some of these areas and some of these places, so a little bit different. All right, getting to our first piece of data. How do you rate the overall quality of life in Lakewood? Seventy three percent say excellent or good. There's fair at twenty one percent. You'll see me rounding up throughout this presentation. And what we like to explain is that fair is 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 okay. We don't put a value judgment on it. And it it may be hard for us in in focus so much on government to to hear it, but the residents aren't focused on City Hall. They're not focused on you. They're focused on themselves. And so if if I don't really have the context or it's just kind of working, I might just say fair. So you put fair and excellent and good together and you're kind of off the charts. I like to explain that this is not an academic exercise. You didn't get a a C or a C minus here. You've got a really dynamic, large majority of your population saying that the quality of life is is great or excellent or good, very similar to previous year's numbers. And you're you're in a very strong place. The other thing we look at and you'll see me reference throughout is the delta between the people who say they're unhappy, the poor, very poor, and the excellent and good. That's a massive difference between those two. That's really what we're we're looking for. Obviously, you are responsible for the city and so you want to see this number at zero, I assume. But we're never gonna make everyone happy, and so it's it's a really strong place to be. Moving to, and by the way, please interrupt me with questions. You you can't throw me off my game. Obviously, I'll take them at the end, but if there's something pressing, please interrupt me. If that's okay with you, Mayor. Compared to other cities and towns, how would you rate Lakewood as a place to live? So maybe a little contextually difficult because maybe I didn't don't live there, but I have a sense of those places. You know, the vast majority of your residents, sixty nine percent, say this is an excellent or a good place compared to those other places. Again, only six percent saying that there's this is not the right place for, you know, the poor or unhappy with that that difference. And you can see you're kind of right there in a in a pretty strong place compared to your peers answering that question. Which of the following best describes what you love most, what you like most about living in Lakewood? We gave them here a prescribed list, this list exactly, and location is number one. And, you know, that's not so inspiring, I guess. But it's it's really your your value proposition or one of your major value propositions. And and it's typical what we see. Edgewater residents say the same thing. It's your proximity where you live and and the, you know, the job center or things like that. Park and and opens parks and open space, right there in the mix. The others fall off pretty dramatically but are not to be ignored. But clearly, if we're talking about the the value proposition, it's location and your parks and open space. Again, something we see is very Colorado in general, right? A lot of communities really value the the parks and open space in general. Next, we we think about the the next two years. What issues do you think are most important to you if they're kind of contemplating? Well, addressing homelessness, and this again was a list that they were they were able to choose from, and they were able to choose obviously more than one, so we can really capture the the full depth of what people care about. Crime prevention is a theme you'll see we talk about later. Improving internet infrastructure and connectivity, and you can say they see they kind of fall off at some point. If if I'm a representative of the city and I'm gonna speak publicly, I'm gonna talk about either your future plans for addressing homelessness and preventing crime or the amazing things you already do and highlight those things that will really make a a great connection with your public. To the extent that you can talk about the great things you're doing in these these areas, you're gonna really make a big difference in 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 having them understand and appreciate what you do. Overall, city government performance, so high is at seventy, you know, thirty percent there or twenty nine percent. Neither high nor low, that kind of fair, no real value judgment, I it's okay. Is it sixty nine percent between the two of them? Again, big differential between, you know, more than three to one or three to one or so between the 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 low and and the people who say they're they're happy. So a a really strong place to be. If we did this in in three years again, I I assume you want that, you know, low number to be at nineteen percent or eighteen percent or lower. That's kind of where it would probably be if you really put your heart and soul into it. You're never gonna get that number to zero. It's just a fact of life that that people. Also, I'm gonna give you some context for the entire survey. And in general, this you already know, but I'm gonna kind of put a filter here. We are being told that government is bad, government's corrupt, institutions are not to be trusted. And this is, doesn't matter what media you're consuming. It's coming from all sides. And and it's not a political thing. It's just kind of what's been the story being told to us as Americans. And even though things are going really great in Lakewood, it's still a a erosion that happens when we're being told some things that are really negative from a national scale. So you can, I don't know if that's a a a good thing or a bad thing to hear, but it's the reality. Your numbers are really good, even though there's some negativity on the national scale. Council representatives generally act in the best interest of the community. So forty nine percent say they agree, thirty two percent say they disagree, and a lot say unsure. And that's okay because they just don't know. They're not, they have no context, haven't seen a council meeting. They don't they don't show up. They don't watch it. They don't talk about it, so they don't know. But a couple of things to note, your numbers have gone up significantly. You are in the plurality of people who say they believe it or they 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 think you're acting in their general best interest. And this is a pretty tough question because they don't have to believe this, but a big chunk of your population does. They they have enough context to think that you're doing really well and you're you're focusing on what matters to them. So this is a a really good number to have. All right, another increase, satisfied or dissatisfied with getting your money's worth for the tax dollars you pay, local tax dollars you pay. And this one's a little bit rough because, again, if you don't have context for what local government's doing, you definitely don't have a context for how much of your tax dollars go to local government, go to the city. But somehow you've gotten to the point where they believe that they're getting great value for it and and a pretty significant majority at fifty five percent. And so a a great starting place here, and you'll see this bear out with the possibility of raising new revenues where you've got a majority there as well. So here, I'll explain this real quick. We ask the question of what are these things are important to you and what are you personally satisfied with? So there on the in the dark blue is it's important to me. In the light blue, I'm satisfied with. And in the orange, you can kind of see that differential. So the biggest differential between important and satisfaction is right here at forty seven percent, and that's street repair conditions and cleaning. So it's really streets, it's kind of stand out significantly. And you'll see it's not just you, actually, as we go forward a little bit. Programs for homelessness, city code, you can kind of see it kind of cascade down. So from a prioritization standpoint, this may be, as a policymaker, where you want to look to on these top several because that's where the gap is. It's it's a possibility what you might want to look to in in how you make that make that make that, you know, those numbers shrink if that's a priority for you. Next up, what aspects of community resources are personally important to you? We give them the list of resources, open space and parks and trails. That's what, you know, really gets them. Facilities and and programs and the other things are are certainly important to people, but the the thing, the physical plant of of my feet on the ground is is what really matters to me as a resident and and it really is a strong, compelling thing. And they've already told us they're happy with that, so it's a really positive thing to talk about. Okay, here's where we see that it's not just you. So when it comes to transportation, personally important to you and satisfied. So again, personally important to me is on the left there, and that's conditions of state highways. And then there's a big differential there. So fifty two percent are are, you know, there's a delta between satisfaction and importance. And and obviously, you don't have full control over all that, but it's a a chance for you to maybe go to some higher ups and say, we need a little bit of more attention here. So you have a sense of what it is specifically on on the transportation side, what else they care about. Conditions in city streets and then the other things fall off from there. I wouldn't say that, right, all these are priorities for people, but but, you know, less so necessarily for some of the other ones later on. All right. Next up is an agree or disagree scenario. And we say, you know, Lakewood should take care of the the streets and utilities and city facilities you already have rather than build new infrastructure. This is a a pretty strong, compelling message to people that they think you've got to kind of take care of the infrastructure you have. And and there's a small population who says grow, do, build. So this, you know, could might be helpful for guidance. Agree or disagree, I'd be willing to pay more to receive more street utility and city facility improvements. A majority says yes. It's a slim majority, fifty two percent. You know, if you need fifty percent plus one, you just got there. But it's a it's a launching point. So at the point you are contemplating this sort of thing, you you you'd have a place to start from. And and you've got a bunch of unsure that might, you know, come to agree if you talk to them about the things you could accomplish with more resources, if that's something you're thinking about. Thinking about the city's online services you've used, we we asked them to to rate the the satisfaction with them. And this is a subset of the population of people who who said that they've used your online services. Eighty percent say they're satisfied with what you are doing online. So, you know, ten percent unsatisfied, but really strong numbers saying they're happy. So there's no need to make massive changes because they're really on board with what you're already doing. So in the last twelve months, forty one percent say they've had an interaction with a Lakewood employee, a city of Lakewood employee. Now, that's up sharply from twenty twenty two. That was kind of COVID era, so maybe not so surprising. And and I want to put a kind of a little explainer here. My waving to a a, you know, a worker in a truck with a city logo on it may be my interacting with the city versus someone else, you know, walking into the counter and talking to the planner or something like that. It's really subjective here. So so but the bottom line is forty one percent say they have, and the next number is really strong. The next number says if I've had some interaction, ninety two percent of them have some, you know, positive interaction. Either it was excellent or good, or it was just the way it was supposed to be. Very few people are telling us that there's a problem with that interaction. And and I'm not trying to sugarcoat anything here, but among those people who say poor or very poor could have been, I got a ticket. My kid was arrested. You know, I didn't get the 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 permit I wanted that day. So, you know, it it doesn't have to necessarily be a an employee who did something wrong. It could just be the way I feel about how I was treated, even though it was done the right way. All right, we asked them to indicate which settings they feel personally safe. And this is a pretty typical question out there in a lot of different places. In their neighborhood during the day, vast majority, commercial areas during the day. You can see the 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 good positive number here is a majority say after dark in their neighborhood. It's 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 comfortable for them. I I mean, I I think I I would assume we'd all want these numbers to be at a hundred percent. But it's not only you. It's not. It's not just crime, the potential. It's not just, you know, fear of of criminal activity. It it could also be, you know, I'm older and I don't feel comfortable walking, you know, when it's not light out and things like that. So it's not just some sort of criminal element here. It's it's a broader context that people can bring in all kinds of things into their head with these answers. All right, now we've got the police services. We asked them again what's important to you personally and then what you're satisfied with. And you can see prevention of crime is at the top of the list where the satisfaction versus importance comes in. And this is a very healthy indicator, and it may not feel that way necessarily. But what it means is I'm not worried about acute issues right now of crime. It means that I'm prospectively thinking that you should be working on prevented prevention, not that immediate arresting people for bad things. Apprehending criminals is high up there and everything else is important to people. But the the biggest differential is on the top here where they think you should be really from a. But the, the biggest differential is on the top here, uh, where they think you should be really, uh, from a, uh, proactive standpoint, doing things. Uh, and you can see things like traffic enforcement and things like that are, are lower on the list. Not to be dismissed, but less so than, and, and again, this is one of those things where I try to encourage. Um, you are already doing amazing things with this, uh, with these areas, I suspect. And so a lot of this is getting the word out and talking about it. So these, uh, numbers are gonna be very useful guides to staff in developing your social media content, in developing your newsletters, in developing the, the, the programs and things that you do to talk about all the great things you do. Presumably, there's some policy things and allocation of resources too. But a lot of this is more about pushing that message out in a way that people can hear it and see it. Um, rate the overall sense of community, this connective tissue in Lakewood. Eighty eight percent say excellent or good or fair, right? It's the way it's supposed to be. Uh, and this number has gone up in by more than ten percent, uh, saying, you know, good or, or, or excellent. Um, that's a really strong indicator of positive movement. And, uh, a very small people, number of people, again, saying that they're unhappy with this. They don't think you have a sense of community. Rate the city's ability, ability to deliver services to residents in a fair and equitable way. Seventy nine percent say you're doing a good job there. Uh, excellent or good or fair. And a very small number of people say they don't think so. This is a great indicator as well. Uh, you, you would see the people who feel like they're being left behind represented here in the, uh, poor, very poor numbers, and they're just not there. Again, I, I always caution, I don't dismiss any of these numbers and I don't assume you do either. But it's very small in, in relation to the, um, uh, to the others. And again, unsure twelve percent, why is that? Cuz I'm just not paying attention or I just don't know. I, this is not part of my daily understanding. What type of develop, development would you like to see in Lakewood? Surprise, surprise, parks and, and park amenities. Um, it, it's, uh, it, it's a little thematic here coming up, uh, with the next few slides. But, um, uh, everyone wants more parks and amenities versus these other things that could be built. Um, housing that's affordable for moderate incomes is right there at the, uh, yeah, right there below it. And, uh, low income housing and, or housing affordable for low income people. And then some other things like facilities. Um, you know, there's some support for other things, but really they want, uh, a park and and they want some housing that's affordable to the people who, who need it. But there's some, uh, a little bit of a divergence there coming up in a minute. Um, so I'm concerned about, uh, finding an affordable place, uh, to live in Lakewood for myself or family members. So sixty one percent say yes. So this is kind of thematically coming together, right? I'm saying that I want more housing that's affordable for people moderate and, and low income. And now I'm telling you that I'm concerned about finding, uh, a home, two to one, uh, saying that they agree with this statement. But then we ask them if they support housing, more housing in their develop, in their neighborhood. And a majority say no. Um, so that's a little bit of a, um, a divergence from, from, uh, how that would work out. Uh, now you still have forty five percent who say they agree. So a big group of people say yes, I support housing in my neighborhood, but the majority, slim majority say no. And then we say Lakewood's already too crowded. There's not enough space for people to continue to move here. It's a somewhat charged statement, but it's a statement that you might hear from a neighbor. Someone might say that. And so we wanted to really understand what would happen if somebody said that from neighbor to neighbor. And you can see sixty percent say that's true, they agree with that. And so that kind of, uh, again, counters the idea of, of, uh, the need, the, the, the desire for those courtside kinds of housing for people and the fear of not having a place to live versus the fact that they're kind of pushing back against, uh, new development. So we, we ask them, what do you do for entertainment? Local restaurants, kind of off the charts there with open space parks. Uh, so you've got, uh, a, a clear picture there of, of where they're, they're spending their time. And then everything kind of cascades down from there, but you've got some other ones that are pretty high up there, like city parks. Um, and so, uh, this could be super helpful, um, from a, uh, you, you know, we bring this slide to ICSC with you, uh, if you wanna get a certain kind of restaurant in town or something like that. Uh, so, or, or trying to get a grant money for open space or think something like that. And then here are your demographics. This is Lakewood and this is what we, we matched. Um, they, uh, you can see from an age group, you're very diverse age wise. Uh, you're very diverse, uh, length of residency, right? You've got a lot of newer residents relatively. Uh, and you're an educated population. Uh, you can see the, the, uh, a very white public population with emerging, uh, Latino population. Um, and, uh, so some, here's the, the facts, the details of who we talked to and who you are as a city. Um, we, we matched ward, uh, from a population standpoint and, uh, and then income as well. And then here's just the survey language by preference, uh, not necessarily by actual speaking. So I fully recognize that that was a lot of data. Uh, and, uh, I can dive in deeper to any of it, answer any questions. Uh, if we don't have the answer, I will tell you and I will tell you, I would get back to you through staff. Um, and I always like to say that we think this is a great, uh, reporting tool. As Ben said, we've got a dashboard that's being developed and be available to you. Uh, but at the point where you think of any other way you want to see this data, we want to provide that to you. There's no, we, we don't have any hourly billing, so, uh, you don't have to worry about that. We just wanna make sure you get full utilization out of it. So any other questions you have today, tomorrow, six months from now, we're gonna come back to you with a way that, uh, gives you the data that's helpful for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pavloski. I appreciate that. That was really interesting to see how you dived through. Um, and really appreciate the, um, the diligence to making sure that we were including, uh, the opportunity to speak in Spanish for that survey as well. So that was a really great, um, presentation. Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up to council questions if we've got any. And while we're waiting, um, I'm curious, are you gonna get into what the tool is? That we had talked about or that was, I think, Mr. Goldstein had mentioned earlier about being able to drill down on certain things?
Uh, so I, uh, I, I mean, I can, I can show a, a working version of it, but, uh, essentially it's a, I mean, um, it's, it's in progress. And, and so it'll be one of those things where you can, um, look at the overall numbers and then say, okay, I wanna look at what, what women think and, and see the numbers based on that or what people think by ward or any other demographic. My caution there is when you look at some demographics that are very small, like a black or an African American population, it's very small. So you literally have a handful of respondents. You don't wanna put too much, uh, uh, credence into those numbers necessarily. It's directional, it's helpful to look at, but, uh, just be cautious of that sort of thing. The big numbers are what, what are, um, uh, what we have, you know, the full confidence in. And then, uh, but definitely from a demographic standpoint, looking at all those things can definitely be helpful from a communication standpoint for who might need a little bit more information about certain topics or who might need to have a, a different way of being communicated with because they, you know, maybe older population because, uh, of the way they communicate with the world. So you'll have all those things available to you. And there, there's already a, a full presentation that has that data that you can flip through. It's a hundred, uh, and fourteen slides. Um, but the, 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 the dashboard would also be, uh, useful for that.
Excellent, thank you. All right, with questions, we'll start with Counselor Sinks and then Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Great, thank you. I, wow, I, you know, you never love statistics until, um, you know, you see it in the flesh like this. So that was wonderful. Thank you for your work on that. And so maybe this might be for staff, speaking about the dashboard. So I wonder about when it might be ready. And also I wonder, um, if it will only be in the form of the slides. I heard you say a hundred fourteen slides. Oh, but I wonder if there will be any commentary like, um, like you just said, that pay attention to the big numbers. You know, just some guidance with the numbers. And so can you address that for us? Thanks.
I'll, I'll start on that. Uh, staff might have something else. Uh, so, uh, it, it will be a dynamic dashboard and I, I think I might try to pull it up just to give you a, a sense of it. Um, and then as far as commentary goes, uh, we don't tend to, you know, add a lot of that, but I think that's a great idea. Uh, we have a, a link to the questions proper, the full questions and answers. Um, and, um, and we, uh, we can absolutely maybe have a link to some, uh, you know, broader themes and ideas of how to look at the data and, and things like that. So, uh, so, yeah, I think we'll, we'll, we'll work with staff on, on the possibility of adding that, um, for sure.
Great, thank you. And, and a possible date when, when the dashmore, dashboard might be up?
I, I, I think we are right, very close to having that. I definitely by the end of the month, but, uh, I think sometime by the end of the week, probably.
Oh, great, thank you.
And, and I'll just add if I may, Mayor. Uh, we, we do have the full survey, uh, the hundred fourteen slide presentation and the full survey are on the city website right now. So if in the search, you just type community survey, uh, it'll be the first link. That's probably the easiest way to find it. Um, so if anyone's interested in diving deep right now, they don't have to wait for the dashboard. The dashboard will be pulling from that same data set. And Adam, I don't know if you wanna talk about, uh, the open ended questions, maybe, uh, just a little bit? And, and kind of that data set for those who are really wanting to kind of see what people said.
Yeah, so there were multiple, uh, moments where there was a, a possibility of, um, uh, of answering an open ended response. So that was for people who were, uh, responding online. They were able to type their response or talking to us on the phone, they were able to tell us their response. And so, uh, the opportunity there is for, we categorize that data just to give a perspective of, of where people are at. Um, but more important for you all is those, those open ended responses that you can read through and see the actual words that your residents said. We, we protect the identity of residents so they can't be identified, but we do put an overlay of demographic. So you'll be able to see, uh, who that person, their experience in life, their age, their gender, how long they've lived in town, things like that, as you read what they're saying. Uh, and, and we suspect that the, the staff and, and your, and counselors will probably get the most value out of that because you'll, you'll get a, um, it, it, it's kind of the equivalent of, uh, uh, you know, uh, six hundred and fifty, uh, times that you're pulled aside in the supermarket by a resident. You know, you, you'll see really those words that come from what they have to say.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you, really appreciate the presentation and, um, helping us put this in context with other cities as well. That's super helpful. Um, I just had a couple of questions, um, to help kind of me understand how to interpret a, a couple of the nuances of different questions. Um, so for the slide that had kind of the difference in how much folks valued like different types of investments in transportation, there was the part that was difference. It was like infrastructure and connectivity, which had like a high proportion of folks who wanted us to focus on that. And then there was also kind of different, a different part that was like investing in bike and pedestrian infrastructure. So just would love to understand like what we could interpret with like what infrastructure and connectivity mean in the context of that, um, kind of difference.
Okay, uh, let me pull up that, uh, question here. Um, and so the, um, in, in some cases, we gave context and others we didn't give much more context. Uh, so I, I don't think in those answer choices, there was much more. Um, but let me, um, find that. Uh, oh, here we go. Let me, uh, share my screen again. So. Uh, so is this what we're talking about?
It might have been one, one late, one sooner, like, um.
Let's see here. Sorry for flashing, folks.
Oh, good.
Uh, no.
Adam, it's the one that has, uh, like investment in roads and, uh, you know, it's like around sixty percent. And then there's another what category? And then it kind of drops off where we see pedestrian and tra- and bicycle.
Yeah, let me see if I can find, excuse me one second, find bike.
I believe that's the slide you're talking about, Councilmember Cruz, is that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that one's, sorry, apologize for the delay.
Oh, good, lots of slides.
I think it's slide thirteen, but I'm not positive.
Uh, well, that's one I just brought up.
Okay.
But I don't know what it is. So, I mean, is, is that, uh, yeah, is, is, is that not it? Uh, the, the, we just.
Thanks, it was like the conditions of city, I don't think it was that one. Um, I can try to review and find it as well. It was like looking at like in, investment delta.
Okay.
Anyway.
I'm looking as well. I'll, we'll find it.
Okay, well, um, I, I can maybe jump while we're looking for that, just to the other question, like to the act, to the slide about condition of city streets.
I think it's slide fourteen.
Okay.
Okay, so, well, uh, oh, I guess, so, we talk about, yeah, there's no connect there, but yeah, let me show you this one.
The largest gap between, uh, importance and satisfaction in conditions of state highways, that slide.
Uh, so that's.
That's thirteen.
It's thirteen.
Or thirteen.
Number thirteen, but if, if.
Question thirteen.
I think counselors didn't think this was the right one, but I wanna.
Is that?
It's, it's not. I, I, like, there, there was one that specifically talked about infrastructure and connectivity as something to invest in. Sorry that I didn't note the.
Okay, well, we'll find it on, and right now, I'll come back to you, we'll have a specific response for you.
Thank you, yeah, sorry about that. Just wanted to understand just the kind of what the implications of those different sections might be.
Okay.
Um, I think to the conditions of city streets piece and then, then also the, the comparisons with like bike infrastructure and walkability, like, are we to understand then that the conditions of city streets is meant really like the road for driving? Or could that be interpreted more broadly based on how people approach the question?
Well, I mean, since we segmented it so specifically, I, I think you can assume that, uh, you know, city streets and state highways are very specifically about, uh, the business of driving. And, you know, travel by foot, travel by bike, public transit, um, ease of car travel broadly are, are, well, th- those other ones, the foot and, and bike and public transit are separate kind of ways of looking at it. So I, I think it'd just be the, the physical, uh, uh, action of driving on those, those streets.
Great, thank you. Um, and then I had just two quick other questions. Um, one was I was curious if you saw any notable deltas. I know the Spanish, um, preferred responded population is much smaller, obviously than the English preferred, but just interested if there's anything notable, um, to your team about any differences, um, in the, in, in the answers of any of those populations.
So, uh, not really. And, and if you look at the cross tabulated data, there's gonna be some, uh, some things that stand out a little bit, but not, you know, uh, not dramatically, like people who lived in town the longest might have a little different perspective on growth, uh, you know, that might show up. But there's no, and, and then you'll see in like the other category for, for race, um, very small number of people, so those things will jut out really significantly. But there's, there's no particular, and a little bit of nuances, right? For people with, for men are a little bit different than women. Uh, for instance, um, uh, when, when it comes to getting their money's worth, you know, there's a delta of about ten percent. Uh, men less, less satisfied. Um, but, uh, but nothing dramatic, nothing where it's like cause for alarm or that we would say, uh, needs to be really, really, very much uniquely addressed. There are some nuances on, uh, by ward, um, that, that stand out. Again, nothing super dramatic, but, you know, Ward two has some, you know, some nuances to it that might, you know, stand out to you and, and, and might, you know, have some. that might, you know, stand out to you and might, you know, have some specific, you know, you might see some rationale for it. But nobody we saw that like was wholesale annoyed or upset or didn't really kind of appreciate where they lived.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And then just finally wanted to clarify kind of the differential and demographic, like of the sampling by ward. So I thought my understanding was kind of like our wards have similar populations. I mean, obviously like different voting participation, but just wanted to better understand kind of the differentials in the kind of sampling by ward.
Yeah, so if we pull that up. Are your numbers, census numbers can shift from reality. So when I, when I say census, we actually use American Community Survey. So I believe we largely match the American Community Survey, which is the latest numbers on ward.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Great, thank you so much. I think my ward mate asked the majority of questions are sort of about like demographics that I was going to ask about, but I have one remaining still, which is, I'm wondering if you have the, I really liked some of the comparisons between 2022 and now. And in particular, I noticed that the, it was another one of those slides with like a bunch of horizontal bars, and it was about the importance of treat, of police treating people with the same, with different identities fairly. I think it was on the one that was about looking forward to the one that had like homelessness services at the top, which I think might have also been the one with the, so it was one of the last slides. Might have been the same one that had the bicycle infrastructure on it. It was like a list of what we should be looking at the next two years, I think. But I'm wondering if that number. Oh yeah, treating residents of all backgrounds fairly. Yes, thank you. So that's like a little bit of a higher differential than I expected on that. Although it has been a big topic of conversation in our community recently. And so I was wondering if it could be something that you can get back to us on if you don't have it conveniently, but I'm wondering if you have that, these same numbers for 2022 that we'd be able to compare? Because I'm really curious enough, that one in particular is the same or has a larger differential or a larger importance than it did this time two years ago.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll look at who specifically said that, who you most believes there's that delta the most. So maybe you can go and address it with that population. Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be incredibly useful. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions this evening? Counselor Lowe, then Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this is really great. Thank you for this work. This is really useful. It, a lot of, a lot of great stuff for us to dig into. So I really appreciate staff getting us all this information. And Mr. Poblosky, thanks for getting all of it to us. Just one very, very quick question for staff. I did find the big thick report on, on the website. It's great. It's like there's, there's sort of a longer version of the slide deck, it looks like. Can we just post this on Lakewood Speaks too? I'm wondering that I think, I think if I'm looking at Lakewood Speaks correctly, the slideshow we just looked at isn't there. Maybe we could sort of post it there so the public can easily review it too.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. We were, we were literally tailoring the presentation and everything up until this morning. So, but yes, we can, we can add it retrospectively. And we can also include those other reports on Lakewood Speaks if folks are coming back to this meeting, you know, to look at the information rather than on the website. And it'll live on the website for years, just like the 22 is, the survey is still up on the website. So people can certainly refer to it whenever they want, but also on Lakewood Speaks, certainly.
I think it's a great slideshow. I just would love as many folks to see it as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I haven't had a chance to compare these survey results with the 2022 or earlier ones. Are the questions phrased the same in each?
So, no, not exactly. Some are, some are not. In this executive presentation, you'll see where we make notes of some slight differences, something to make it more relevant to Lakewood. And so those could account for some of the differences. And I believe our goal in this survey was to normalize from a methodological standpoint and normalize the language going forward to be able to have greater comparative ability. So that doesn't mean that the comparisons to previous years isn't viable, but, but some of those words were not exact, just because the words used in past were kind of generic national kind of survey language that sometimes didn't necessarily directly apply to Lakewood.
If I might add, Councilmember Brian, we did think about, a lot about that from a staff standpoint as we were going through. And we knew by switching vendors and, you know, and methodology a little bit, rather than using a weighted survey, we're going with a direct survey, that this was going to be a little bit of a reset year. So I think that was the trade off we decided to make. But I do think the comparisons in most cases still work, but we have the same questions that you had.
Yeah, no, and I think that's certainly fair to say that it might be a little bit difficult to look at previous years, given that the methodology, weighted versus not weighted, questions not exactly the same, you know, what have you. I did notice, and I tried to skim this as quickly as I could when you said where we could find this. The appendix D gives us a few, you know, it says a few selected survey questions, and it shows by year how that compares. You know, I noticed in some of the other ones, it really went back and did a comparison for each of the questions. And I think that could be helpful. I don't know for certain, but it would be nice if we went to the trouble of asking the question to the extent we asked that question in previous surveys, if we could make note of how that compared to previous years. Are we doing better? Are we doing worse? With the understanding that methodology has changed, that wording has changed as well.
Yeah, through staff, we'll, we'll look at that and get back to you quickly on, on making sure we make whatever comparisons we think are viable.
And then I'm going to take just another stab at Counselor Cruz's question. Let's take a look at slide seven, if we could, to see if that's the one she's referring to. Because I think this is helpful really for frankly, any of the questions to understand how we look at this. Is that right, Counselor Cruz, or is that still not it?
Looking, this is prospectively for next two years.
Yes.
Okay, great. So you kind of gave us a really quick and I think effective explanation, but maybe you can dive into this a little bit more using the investing in bike and pedestrian infrastructure as an example, since that was the question that was asked earlier.
Okay, so I guess the first thing I'll say, I will, I believe all the data here is honest, real numbers from real people, and they, you know, they're passionate about where they live. And they love, they clearly love Lakewood. But I also recognize, and you've heard me kind of say before, they're not really thinking about public policy like you all do. And so we're really asking them to weigh in on things that are not top of mind. Now, you know, traffic ingestion may be top of mind today, maybe not tomorrow. And so each one of these things, we're really asking them to kind of prioritize and give a sense of. So that one is one way I'd kind of look at this. And, and so, and then from there, you can just see, you know, the, the big majority of people chose multiple things, but they definitely chose these ones at the top. And so you know that's what a majority cares about. I wouldn't put a particular value judgment on these other ones because they're all pretty much bunched up in this section and bunched up in this section. And so it doesn't mean that they're, they're not caring about it. It doesn't mean that it's not a priority necessarily for them. It just means that more people chose these ones that rose to the top. Is that, is that address what you're looking for?
It might address what I'm looking for. Counselor Cruz may have some questions there. Are, at the very end of this, the version that you have online, the appendix F verbatims, is that all of the open ended answers? Or is that, you know, we picked some that were more robust in terms of providing answers?
It's everything. We did not hide a thing. You paid for it, you get everything.
Right. So you're right. So as we're slogging, or as the community slogging through some of this, really, when you get to page 67, that's all the answers there, and they'll take you through the end of it. So even though it's pretty 290 some odd pages, most of it is the verbatim answer, so that's helpful. Is there, is there one, any other cautions that you think we should know that you haven't already said with respect to using this survey in terms of creating policy or not creating policy?
No, I mean, I think I've already said it, these top line numbers are the way that we would typically look at it from a policy perspective, the ones that stand out from a policy perspective. It makes it easier to make those choices. And, and it's just that when you get to smaller universes, it, you know, is directional and, and it doesn't mean they don't care, but just the bigger numbers are the bigger numbers. It helped more helpful. And I think, Counselmember Cruz, what you might have been asking here is, was there any more context given to this statement? And the answer is no. And, you know, that's a, it's a great question. It's a great possibility, right? What would I conjure as connectivity? What would you conjure as connectivity? Maybe very different. And it may be one of the most kind of, you know, the least understandable, you know, possibly, set of words we used. More staff speak, so I will take responsibility for that. But, but clearly people have adopted it, and maybe that was the infrastructure part more than it was the connectivity part, but they kind of go hand in hand, so.
I'm sorry, one last question. Were there any control questions or something to be able to sort out wackiness?
So, control meaning to prevent someone from taking, no, the answer is no. There were no control surveys, but just remember, we only talked to individuals we knew. So, so we went one to one. We talked to an individual resident. We knew who they were. We knew all their other demographic details. And, and so there was no chance of shenanigans. There was no chance of someone getting into the survey who was, you know, there. And we also didn't pay an incentive or anything, so there's no, no logic to someone trying to answer the questions. And, and we do, let me put even a, no control questions, but we look for things like what they call straight liners. So, so we can look in the online format, if someone went through and just clicked on shore, 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 or, or went through in, you know, four and a half minutes when we know the average was 18 minutes. So we do look and prevent that. We also, we look at IP addresses, but again, in, we often do that in like big open surveys where, where there are chances for people to weigh in from other towns and things like that. But, you know, we're okay with responses that come from an IP address in New York City or in Cabo, if we have one or two of them, right? Because it's very logical that you're on a trip and you take your survey for your community survey, you know, and when you're sitting in your hotel room. But, but we have no concern over responses from anyone other than residents.
Thank you.
Counselor Spinks.
Thank you. We've probably all heard the term data driven decision making. And so this is so wonderful, and it's like really nice to have and informative. However, we want to probably take it that next step, that we make decisions based on the data. I appreciated Counselor Ryan's question about any cautions about making policy based on this number. And I think what I heard was not really, no real cautions. And, and so maybe it's just a comment that as we, you know, think about getting ready for our retreat, that we let the data inform some decisions that we have. And then also for staff, I think it's going to be good if you would maybe give us some updates like, we're doing, the staff has, or, you know, we've done this or that with street connectivity or whatever, based on this, you know, based on what council has said and also based on the survey. So just to, to keep this in front of us to help us inform our decision making for policy as we move forward. Thanks.
Mayor, do you want me to share quickly the draft dashboard?
Okay.
So I will share it right here. And again, draft format, you can see the kind of backend inner workings here. It won't look like that when it's public, but we see put some big numbers here on the left in quality of life and some of those big, interesting numbers at the top. There's community perception section, takes a minute to populate. There's priorities, there's performance, there's police, infrastructure. And then, so if we were to, you know, for instance, go to police, and if we would want to, here's our big numbers overall, top lines. But if we wanted to know just what, you know, what women think only, we would just come, let's see here, come here, and I can press only, actually. And then that would filter for women only. And if we took that, if we took that away and took back to everybody, you'd see the numbers shift. So you can kind of play back and forth with that. And then we have the other things like education and income. And so, you know, how do people of lower incomes feel about housing and things like that? It could be a very useful tool, and we hope it is all throughout, throughout the years of using this data. And this is something that you own. This is something can easily be, relatively easily be updated as future data, whether hopefully we're doing it for you, but if not, it doesn't matter. You get to have it so you can update it with the next firm that's doing it. Staff can do things with it. This is really your tool to use.
That's great. Thank you. That's exciting. All right. Do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Did we just lose our guest?
No, I'm here.
Oh, no, there you are, Mr. Poblosky. Sorry, I've got moving, shifting boxes in front of me and I couldn't find you. So I just want to, you know, as we bid you adieu tonight, I thank you very much for your work and for being available to present this and answer questions for council tonight. It is very, very informed for us to have these kinds of tools as we are going through the decision making and trying to ascertain how community feels without certain things that we're doing. So I really look forward to having that dashboard as we kind of move through some of our topics that we will, that we will expectedly be walking through next year. So thank you very much for that. And with that, we'll send you off and maybe we'll find you with new questions. I don't know. But I wish you a very happy holiday season, kind of soon upon us.
Thank you. Always available to you anytime. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everybody. And with that, before we finish our meeting tonight, we do have council committee reports on the agenda. So would open up the floor to anyone that would like to make a rapport on any of our boards, commissions, committees. Okay, well, seeing none this evening then. I will go ahead. Um, I will go ahead and we have no other further business to address this evening. So we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's study session at eight oh five PM. Thank you, everyone.